Commissioner Benton?
Here.
Commissioner Herring?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Criss here.
Your mic's not on.
Oh, sorry. All right, Commissioner Criss is here. Did anyone get the roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, so the roll call to repeat is Commissioners Criss, Nielsen, Benson, Herring, and Turner are present. Commissioner Radman is not here.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Agenda. Agenda item number one. Status update from SLR on new draft chapters and finalizing the community vision. Collins, we turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, can you hear me okay? And I'm going to share my screen first. Everybody seeing everything okay? Okay, good evening. For the record, I'm Robert Collins with SLR. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again, and nice to see everyone. Also joining me tonight live via satellite from New York City, we have Julia Fiore, our senior planner and economist, and then also from West Hartford, Connecticut, I have Taylor Daigle joining us, who will be, you know, going through some stuff with us tonight. So getting underway, let me just go to the agenda tonight as you kind of alluded to. The first thing that we want to talk about is we have concluded the community vision, community input session. I hope everybody participated and enjoyed that process. We have some exciting results and reporting to go through with you. Also, we're going to kind of give you an update on the project schedule and check in on that. And then lastly, we're going to then start to talk about the next steps, and we're going to lay out the kind of the initial groundwork on the next items that Sarah's going to send to you tomorrow for your review over the next couple of weeks, which is starting to look at goals and strategies, as well as a draft of Chapter Two, which we're supplying to you now because we feel that it will be crucial for your review of those goals and strategies, and we'll also kind of supply some of that analysis, analysis and more in-depth review of some of the community data points and information that some of the commissioners have been asking for. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor Daigle, who's going to do the speaking about going through the summary results that we have. I think you have a memo in front of you that Sarah shared with you, and Taylor's going to kind of update us on the results of the community vision survey and community involvement.
Thanks, Robert. Good evening, everyone. So like Robert mentioned, you all have the memo provided by Sarah. This is going to be a high-level overview of that. There are more, a little bit more details in the memo regarding the responses, and we do have the larger database behind us as well, so we can, we can do our best to answer questions off the cuff, but we will, we'll go into the takeaways here and then have some discussion about it afterwards. So the review period for the vision statement for the public was about three weeks. We closed it this past Monday. We had the eight questions that gauged public opinion on the community vision in all four theme areas. Overall, we had just over 600 views to the vision subpage, the website that was hosting the survey, and we had 148 unique responses to the survey as well. We did remove a handful, I believe it was less than 10, survey responses because they're either similar, like duplications, or just empty responses. So we feel pretty strongly that these are all unique and valuable insight from the public. We did also want to highlight the number of views on the project website as well because we do feel that the difference between those two might largely accounts for people who reviewed the vision statement and, you know, had no issues with it and did not feel the need to work through the survey questions. So we do think this gathered a good, good review through the public. And the general takeaways from the whole project team here is that participants largely showed support for the community vision. There were some critiques and suggestions for your consideration for any updates if necessary, but overall, things were positive.
This is Commissioner Criss, if I may. Regarding the 148 unique respondents, do you believe this is an adequate response pool in order to, you know, generate a good conclusion from the residents?
We believe so, based on some of the, you know, information that Taylor already said. But, you know, this was a community engagement effort, and if you kind of compare it to if we, you know, like for instance, if we look at the community open house that we had earlier or late last year, where we had approximately 80 people that showed up, we feel that, you know, the fact that we reached potentially up to almost 600 folks that at least reviewed it, that's a pretty healthy, you know, interest, you know, also thanks to the, getting the word out that, you know, Sarah and staff, and I'm sure that you all did as well. Getting 148 unique respondents would be similar to like people actually participating at the open house, and so I think we have a pretty, we have a pretty healthy number.
Thank you.
All right, Robert, if you want to go to the next slide, there we go. So I'll just run through a few of the takeaways from each question that we got. So the first question, we were asking for concurrence with the "who are we" statement, and if it was accurately reflecting their perspective of New Canaan today. You can see here, just over 80% of participants agreed or strongly agreed that the, the language in this section reflected the community at this time. For question two, we asked the participants about the proposed vision, which was the second paragraph of the, the larger document. We asked for their opinion on a scale of one to 10 about how they felt about the vision, with the 10 being they strongly agreed with it essentially, and one being strongly disagreed. The average score was a 7.4 out of 10, and 58% of respondents gave it an eight or higher. So there was a lot of concurrence with, with the proposed vision. The third question was open-ended, and this was, we just wanted to ask participants what their hopes for New Canaan were in the next 10 years. And the primary purpose of this is while we drafted everything with all of the public input that we gathered previously, this is kind of a, another checkpoint for us to make sure that we're hitting the mark and we're discussing the topics that people are concerned about. So we had 97 responses to this one. The top three slash four categories were making or maintaining the small-town feel and concerns for overdevelopment, with just over a third of participants discussing that. Housing diversity and affordability, over a quarter of participants discussed those concerns. And then just under 20% discussed open space conservation and environmental issues, as well as transportation, parking, and active mobility concerns. And I think based on our review and the responses we got, we feel that most of these, or all of these concepts are discussed within the community vision statement that's been proposed.
Excuse me, I have a question on the first two bullet points, maintaining the small-town feel, and then the housing diversity, diversity and affordability. It just would like your opinion, do you feel that there's a, perhaps a little bit of a contradiction there between those two items?
I do think there's a good mix, and I think we will kind of see that a little bit more as we get into the housing topic during our last, the last question here. The open-ended responses, a lot of people took the opportunity to discuss and reiterate concerns that we have heard before, so as you can expect, there are pro, like people on both sides of these issues here, wanting more development, or, you know, being concerned that housing is the issue with that, or, and whatnot. So there is a balancing act here with, you know, what kind of changes are made as far as appeasing everyone.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, I would also just add that I don't necessarily, I mean, feel, and I think with our discussions with, with the Subcommittee, I think, and also Sarah, I don't necessarily feel that maintaining a small-town feel is in conflict with housing diversity. I think most typical small towns have a diverse, you know, diversity of housing between duplexes or four-unit buildings and single-family and ADUs and things like that. So I think, you know, there's, while these might be broad, general categories, there's ways to fit that balance in so that, you know, we're walking an equal ground on all of these different types of issues.
So the next four questions were focused on the theme areas, and we wanted to make sure that each of these theme areas were broadly addressing community issues that people felt were important. So we asked for, on a scale of strongly disagree to strongly agree, if they felt that each theme was addressing those issues, and you can see we had significant concurrence with all four. The only one that had, you know, a little bit more disagreement on was promote creative and balanced development, but it was nothing, nothing drastic that stood out to us as needing to be edited based off of that. And then our final question that we asked was just an open-ended, you know, did we miss something, do you have something else to tell us type question. We had about 60 responses to this one. They were varied, and I would say that all of those responses fell into three categories, and it was either supporting the proposed vision and thanking the, the project team for transparency and, and opportunity to provide feedback. The second category was groups that were giving suggestions and feedback about the proposed vision, whether that be topics or, you know, direct editing. And the third category was groups that were reiterating their concerns from the earlier question about their hopes for the community. And you, you are all familiar with your community, you know what a lot of the concerns are, but the top three that kept popping up were concerns for overdevelopment, issues related to 830G and cell towers, as we, we might expect here. And so the large takeaways that we took from the collective survey itself, but also the additional information we got from this open-ended question, there is a mixed opinion about the housing discussion, and there's some more details in the memo about it, but participants were fairly split on some thinking that, you know, housing was discussed in the vision too much, and others saying we need to be more direct about it and talk about it more. And so that will be kind of a decision that needs to be made, but there is a range of opinions on it, which I'm sure you're all aware of. The second large takeaway was that some had a concern about, like, a lack of discussion about protecting and restoring natural, the natural environment in open space, which could be something that we fine-tune in, I believe, the second or third theme areas. And the third was that a lot of participants mentioned that there were concerns that the community vision was too broad or vague or not actionable. And our general response to that is that we agree that the community vision is meant to be broad, and without the background of how this plan is going to be developed, the public may not be aware, but this is meant to be the broadest part portion, and the content from the community vision is going to be built on in the following chapters with each theme, the future land use plan, and the overall goals, strategies, and actions that we develop together.
Is that a, just a point on the second section, you have there larger takeaways. On the first point, I would be surprised if it were other than mixed opinions, so that doesn't surprise me frankly. That's my opinion on it. Second, protecting, restoring the natural environment, open space, I think one of the issues we have is that the open space we have is the open space we have, and there's hard to create new open space. I think just, the point I would make is that the issue is, on restoring the natural environment I hear, which this commission, I think, on a whole has worked hard for, but also how we can optimally use the open space and natural resources we have. So it's, you know, let's play the cards we've been dealt even better than we are, would be my own view on this. And I would agree with the points Mr. Daigle made on, on bullet point three regarding too vague, is that this is a vision statement, it's not getting into the weeds. So I would concur with her conclusion on that.
Thanks for that review, Taylor. In talking with Sarah earlier today, and as we've been reviewing the community vision, community survey results, you know, we wanted to obviously kind of pause at this point and kind of have a discussion with you all. I realize that you're just now finding out the survey results, but we kind of are just digesting them too. So we wanted to kind of figure out, you know, how you want to move forward. We do feel that in analyzing everything that we saw from the survey, like, you know, we did, you know, actual word searches and things like that, we were trying to identify if there was any subject or any point that we had all kind of forgotten to include, or somehow include into the vision statement. And we, we didn't really come up with anything. We felt that there was a lot, you know, potential, like maybe slightly different wording that we could use, or, and then the other thing that I think is beneficial to understand is just like all of the other community engagement tools that we have had up to this point, between the very first survey to the open houses, to the community dialogues that you had, to this point of reaching out to the community about the vision, you know, we're taking all of the comments that we're getting, and we're going to be using them, and we already have been using them, to craft the goals further, the theme areas, obviously, the goals, the strategies, and actually then actually the specific action steps. So some of those points that people might have made about, like, can we be more specific, they're going to hopefully start to see that in the goals, strategies, and actions. And I think, you know, you, you will probably concur with that. But, you know, those are kind of like, you know, our initial broad conversations. I know Sarah might want to make a point or two as well, but then I think we're just open for discussion on how you'd like to proceed with the community vision.
I think my microphone is open now. So I guess, I feel like we're very much in the ballpark on the themes and words within the statements here. What I sometimes do in other pursuits is begin to look at goals and strategies and test them back to the themes to see if they fulfill them. So I think it's a difficult sequence to say we're lock-set on our vision forever, and not thinking about the idea that, okay, the next waterfall down is, if these are three or four vision statements, we may have eight goals that come out of them, and each goal may have three strategies. So we may have 24 strategies that all have to feed back to these three visions. And I feel like in that process, we may come back to a situation where we say, well, actually this 23rd and 24th strategy really isn't reflected in the themes, maybe we should go back and wordsmith that a little to make it tie back more effectively. So I hesitate to wordsmith at this time until we kind of flow down that waterfall and then test back. I mean, one example I'll give you is, you know, should we put another tennis court in a park? You know, that's enhancing things, but it's also taking up open space. So, you know, how is that going to be balanced against these two strategies? And how are we providing themes and guidance that provide a hierarchy that would not make it an arbitrary decision by someone sitting in my chair? So a pause there.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Criss. I would agree with that broadly, is that I wouldn't want to say that we would, let's say, agree on the vision tonight, and it's carved in stone, and it's not going to be looked at until the end. We need something as a starting point, and I think my own sense is this is a good starting point. We may need to tweak it as we move forward in the process, and I would expect, I would be surprised if we don't look back in some things and revisit them. But we need to start somewhere. I think we have a decent enough space now, and as we move forward, we may want to reexamine maybe even individual word choice, or maybe add a sentence and so forth. But I think it's at least 90% there at this point, in my opinion. But I would, I would agree, Commissioner, that, you know, "it ain't over till it's over," the phrase I would use, and that as we move forward, we may even need to look back and move things around as we educate ourselves and receive more input from the community. So that's my, my opinion on this.
And I didn't mean to be negative about it. I think, I think the vision statement's in a very good place, but I, I struggle with the incremental wordsmithing at this point without...
Your mic's not on.
Oh, sorry. And just to maybe respond to Commissioner Criss's comment, I don't, I didn't mean to come across negatively with the community vision. I think the community vision's in a relatively good place, and I would feel, I'd feel a little bit of a loss as to absolutely wordsmithing it until I could understand maybe the anchor points that we'd be looking for down the line. Because I recall a conversation with you or your colleague talking about, you know, wanting to get to some, some outcome, and then making sure we have the right anchor point within the vision. I feel like there are a good number of anchor points here.
Other Commissioners?
It's Commissioner Turner. In the 2014 Plan of Conservation, we had, we had two elements. We had the strategic plan, and then we had the implementation. I'm wondering if some of these concerns would come out and be further identified and have a higher comfort level on the strategic side. And I'm not sure, are we going to have an implementation element as part of this Plan of Conservation as we did in 2014?
Yes, that is part of the program, so that there is going to be an implementation table. That's correct.
Do you think that if we address that, maybe early on, that it might give us a higher comfort level on the strategic side?
Well, I mean, when you say address that, do you mean like make that the public aware that that's going to be included? Because obviously, we can't have the implementation table until we actually have all the goals, strategies, and action steps kind of, you know, framed in, and then that's obviously where the implementation table would kind of flow out of. You know, so I think, you know, we can continue to communicate and share information with the public about what the final document's going to look like and what all the pieces are, and actually, we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight. And, you know, most of that's going to kind of flow together pretty quickly, and I think, you know, we are gearing up for sometime in the month of May to have a actual community open house where we review the actual draft goals and strategies and actions. And at that meeting, we can also kind of clarify with the public what the full document's going to look like.
Okay. I just was thinking that it might help the Commissioners better understand the process and that, you know, the concern that was brought up, that we don't want to finalize the strategic plan, which is understandable. And I'm just thinking that when you start to understand how these issues get implemented and how they can change, that it might help us maybe come to a conclusion on the strategic side. Just to, just as...
I mean, generally, I think we're in concurrence with you. I think, I think we're in concurrence with you. I don't know if we actually call it a strategic plan though, but I mean, I guess you're talking about just the POCD itself, or is that what you, what you mean? We're not, because we're not actually doing like a separate strategic plan, but I think the whole POCD itself will be, will be coming to, will be coming forward very quickly now that we're at that juncture. And I do agree with every, all the other comments that have been made tonight. You know, I don't think we were wanting to necessarily completely like lock down the community vision. I think we were only wanting to know if there was any subjects or ideas that we had maybe overlooked in our, all of our discussions. And I think, you know, I totally agree with your comments about the fact that if we haven't, you know, you know, obviously missed an idea or a subject, you know, as we're writing the plan and actually further developing the goals and strategies, if we need to go back and make a tweak or two to the vision statement, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be open and able to do that without a doubt.
Commissioner Criss, I mean, I'd like to get a sense from the other Commissioners that, do we think that the main, call it issues, points, themes have been touched on? Not getting into the weeds on exactly the wording on it, but, you know, are we broadly moving in the right direction? Thoughts, Commissioners?
Commissioner Benton, I think at a starting point it is, but it's, in my desire, I'd want to read the whole thing and then revisit the vision statement, because I notice when I, when I go back to the 2014, it does call out, part one is the strategic elements, and part two is the implementation framework. And it just, it's laid out very cleanly, so you can understand what we're trying to do, and then how we're going to do it. And then when you go back to the vision statement, it's almost like the executive summary. And I think till we see the details, it's going to be hard to really do much more on the vision statement at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said, but I think we're good to go and keep moving forward.
Commissioner Turner, any thoughts you want to share?
No, I, I think that as far as the community, that we should go ahead and move forward. I do think that, you know, the comment about the summary, you know, I think we have to kind of go through this a bit more and continue to develop it before we can, you know, get to a point where we can finalize the strategic vision.
So just to read back what I'm hearing, that it's the universal conclusion of the Subcommittee that we're broadly on the right track. Is that a fair statement?
Agreed.
Okay, good. Got agreement on that.
Okay, great. And then in terms of like the hierarchy, and maybe this Tom's point made me kind of think of it this way, is that, you know, a vision is sort of an idyllic, you know, North Star, but a strategy is making a choice. So I think in the vision, everybody wins, but in the strategy, there are winners and losers. And so, I mean, I don't mean to put it so succinctly, but I feel like the vision, it's important to put all these different stakes out there, but we don't necessarily need to stack rank them. Whereas I think the strategy is, is when you might have to do that. Is that a fair statement?
The model I have is the preamble to the Constitution, you know, establish justice, secure domestic tranquility, well, what does that mean? But it has the main themes there, exactly what they mean is followed up later, but I think that's sort of what we got here. That's my model for it.
Okay, yeah, I'm with you.
You know, my hope is, is that, you know, this is ultimately, in the end, this is a policy document, you know, that guides the town when it comes to conservation and development issues, and then, you know, which then leads to the regulating part, which is the zoning regulations. And my, my goal is always to try to make sure that it's a win-win plan, not winners and losers. But I know that, I know what you mean, because there are balance issues and ideas within the community, but I think we should try to make sure that we're reading, meeting like the best balance, you know, like a consensus plan type of a mentality. But I think, you know, obviously, as we start to look more, more closely now at those, at the theme areas, each theme area individually, looking at the actual goals and then the strategies, I think that might start to come to fruition or clarity a little bit more. And we can, you know, we can be very careful with the wording and the suggestions so that we feel that that's being met.
So Commissioners, can I conclude that we, you know, we checked this box as much as we can check it now, we're moving on to the next topic?
Yep. Okay, great. Well, thank, thank you so, oh, sorry.
Please.
Sorry. Thank you so much for that discussion, and we're, we're excited to move on to the next steps. And obviously, each step is, you know, evolving like this, and, you know, there's opportunities to continue to check in on each, each piece as we move forward. So now we're going to talk about the project schedule really quickly, just to update you, and then also then end with talking very specifically about the actual next steps, which is the goals, strategies, and action development, as well as the draft plan. So taking a look at the schedule that we shared with you back in February for developing the goals, strategies, and actions, we were on target to have a meeting on March 20th, which is identified right here in the center of the, of this. Are you, are they able to see my cursor?
Yes, we can see your cursor.
So we're right on target with that, but we are just slightly, because Sarah is actually going to be sharing with you tomorrow the draft goals and strategies, and I'm going to give like an overview of that. We also have decided to give you, based on our conversations and what I mentioned, is that instead of waiting until May to give you, you know, some of the... of the draft chapters, we're actually going to go ahead and tomorrow also give you a draft of Chapter Two, which is New Canaan Today, which is a more in-depth look at the community profile and existing conditions inventory that we previously reviewed with you over the last couple of months. That basically is a data book of just compiling all the various types of data that we feel should be relevant to be considered when updating the P O C D. The chapter in the actual document, while that community profile or data, you know, book is going to be probably an appendix to the document, we want to make sure that we take all of the important nuggets and pieces out of that and put it into the actual document that then ends up supporting the plan that we're all developing together. So Chapter Two is going to be, and I'll go in that a little bit more detail in a few minutes, but that's going to be, you know, you'll have your first shot at taking a look at some of our more in-depth discussion on that. So as you can see on the schedule, you know, we're, we're on target with today's meeting on the vision statement. But we need to slide the schedule forward by about a week or two, because we need to discuss with you how many, how much time you want to have to review the goals and strategies and Chapter Two, and then supply comments back to Sarah and us. And then, you know, have more facilitated conversations on that. So we're assuming that we probably will move that forward by maybe a week or two. Sarah and our team discussed today of giving you most likely from tomorrow, when you'll receive the documents, to April 3rd, which is two weeks away. Wanting to find out if you concur, if that's enough time you feel to take a look at the, initially take a look at the goals and strategies.
Yeah, so I'll just clarify, we're talking about probably 25 pages of text, just to understand how much reading you're signing up for. I think it's like 25 pages between the two documents.
A lot of it's been grad school.
So I just, just you, no, it's not like an 100-page chapter that's getting sent to you or something like that.
Please, people have views on this, please.
Sorry, I have a question. This is, this is one of the most exciting parts of the process for me personally. Because I think this is, if I heard you correctly in earlier conversations, one of the things I've been asking for is sort of out-of-the-box ideas from your SMEs, subject matter experts. And I think you have one on the line tonight, and you did during the RFP process. You know, I consider myself just a layman in terms of planning. And so, one of the cool things about strategies is that they can be, to your point, a win-win. But sometimes that requires an SME to come in and say, well, a win-win strategy is to do this one, two, three punch play that does X, Y, and Z to get this result. And so, to my mind, that would require me getting a little educated on, on what the SME's sort of expert analyst opinion on that strategy is. So what I would think would may happen would be, okay, we would recommend these five goals, and this goal was recommended by one of your colleagues. And they would say, hey, this goal is what we'd recommend because we've seen it in action in these three case studies in these three towns, and it worked out well. And that's why we're recommending the goal. Am I dreaming by suggesting such a thing?
Not necessarily. I mean, I think there's definitely, I mean, you know, you know, that's a possibility. I think what we really need to do is identify what, where those important points are that you want to talk about. And also, just to clarify a little bit, I think, and I'll explain this when we, when we get to beyond the schedule, when we start, when I zero in on talking about the goals and strategies, is that that's probably a little bit more appropriate, probably more at the action step level, action steps or policies. Because the, the goals are going to be very broad, the strategies are going to be more, a little bit more specific, but supporting a variety of topics to meet the goal. But then the action steps and the policies are going to be the very specific items, which I think the subject matter experts can help guide you and all of us with. And as part of the development of the action steps, which will come after we kind of feel that most of the goals and strategies have kind of been, you know, broadly laid out, is we're talking about having, you know, in-depth meetings first with town staff and other appropriate stakeholders, as will be identified with Sarah. And then that could also been, we will also be talking on our end, but we can also bring those conversations to a subcommittee meeting as may be appropriate, you know, with our subject matter experts, you know, in climate resilience, when we, you know, because we're really going to look at specific action steps there. Also, active mobility and transportation. Obviously, Julia is on the call tonight, and she is our economist and expert in marketing and, you know, economy and things like that. So those types of things will be flowing out in some of her suggestions, for instance, for action steps. And she has been actively involved in crafting some of the goals and strategies that would lead to those action steps. And I think that, you know, if you, when you start to review Chapter Two, and then that leads to then reviewing the goals and the strategies, that will start probably clarifying where you might have some questions of like, what would be some more in-depth, or how could we maybe broaden or narrow down the focus of the strategy? And what are some ideas that you may have of interest for action steps? And then to kind of bring those action steps to final fruition, that's where we can have those conversations. And I think, you know, after this initial review and your comments back, that will probably start to clarify for us where those important subject matter experts come into play, or even town staff that we might need to bring to the table to talk about with you in more detail.
I'm looking at Theme One and what we say, which is speaking to me on this topic. New Canaan, second paragraph, New Canaan envisions a future where, balanced with the need for innovative and creative development, the town's history and landmarks that define New Canaan's identity are respected and appropriately preserved. So I'm focusing on innovative and creative. I don't want the same old, same old stuff. I want something creative as we stayed here.
Right.
With, with the anchor being, you know, the town's small town identity, we want to preserve, but try to move it forward within that context. That's my view on this. But innovative and creative.
Those would be good anchors for a goal of, you know, maintaining housing, historic housing, but also allowing for creative development adjacent or near. And then the action might be creating a zoning profile that would do X, Y, and Z, or that. Is that the way the waterfall flows?
I, I think so. And, you know, remember, you know, we are your consultants, that we're bringing to, forward to you our ideas and our suggestions and our, you know, recommendations. But, you know, when it gets down to the action steps, you know, this is really where we can guide you and make suggestions. But ultimately, you know, it's going to be most important for all of us as a complete team to come up with the best action steps that meet those types of things. We'll, we'll make suggestions as well as bring, you know, again, forward suggested ideas. But ultimately, it's going to be your all's decision on whether those are in fact the, you know, innovative and creative solutions that you want to see and move forward. And I'm sure that you also, with your unique perspectives of the community itself, you may have some known ideas for some action steps that you'll want to include, you know. So, you know, those, when we get to the action step discussion, it's going to need to be a very open, you know, even like a bigger roundtable type of discussion. You know, and some of that may have to take place with all of us looking at them individually, and then compiling our lists together, and then kind of weeding through and figuring out which action steps we feel are the most appropriate. You know, we will do that as much as we possibly can, you know, with Sarah's guidance, because she also is more involved with you all and with the town. And we hope that we can all craft those to the greatest benefit of the final plan.
Commissioner Benton here. Content aside, I think one of the ways these documents get lost is if it's not laid out right. And so when I look back at the 2014, there was, there was an easy way to understand how the recommendations play into the observations and some of the study data. So I'm curious if you have a template yet defined as to how you see the pages stacking up. Because reading 25 pages of content is going to be hard if I don't understand how you're mixing the information together. And the example being, if you look back at the 2024, every single section would have information on the side that was about the characteristics or the studies or observations or feedback that came to the study. And then you've got the meat of the content. The meat of the content without kind of the relationship to the facts that we had uncovered, it just gets lost. And I think if I'm reading 25 pages and I can't see the correlation, this can be hard. So I'd love to see if you have a framework yet defined for how you see each section being laid out, so that we can understand how the content's going to play off each other.
I'll just jump in real quick. So, you know, we are just going over the schedule right now, and they are going to do an overview of what you will be sent tomorrow morning with the documents. And I think what they have planned to present in a couple of minutes will hopefully help with that bigger picture. But I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that, that's a really large, open-ended question. I mean, obviously, what we can do is we can, you know, through Sarah, we can share some of our draft plans, you know, if you don't have some of those initial links that we had from, you know, eight months ago, when we kind of reviewed some of our existing plans. I mean, it's kind of hard to dissect like each chapter with, you know, in the final document. I mean, obviously, I think we're going to, it's going to flow very traditionally as a P O C D document. You know, we're, we're going to try to mix words with call-out boxes, you know, highlighting certain texts. We're going to have pictures, graphs, those types of things. And what might be good is just to continue to kind of review, listen to the rest of the conversation, look at what you get tomorrow. If you still have kind of questions on like wanting to understand what that final format would be, we can then certainly share some examples of some of our completed plans that will probably trend, even though we'll make sure that, and we want to work with you to make sure that the New Canaan Plan is as unique as possible. You can see some of our examples that may answer some of your questions.
I would like to see that.
Does that kind of frame it up a little bit, a little bit more?
A little bit more. I mean, I got to see the content and see how it all plays off each other. But having a template of what you've done before, which will steer as to what you're thinking the layout will be, will help me read the document better.
I mean, I can jump around a little bit, and I was going to talk about the goals first, but kind of giving you an overview of Chapter Two, maybe we'll, we'll look at this first and we'll jump back. This is like, this is our proposed table of contents for the final plan that we kind of talked with you about in the back of the beginning. There is, you know, there is going to be probably some adjustments, and there may be a few more chapters depending on how we divide things up. But this is the narrowest focus of like the generalities that are going to be within the final plan. The first is that there's going to be an introduction chapter, which will most likely function as, you know, the executive summary. But probably more on the briefer side rather than like a large, you know, executive summary. It's going to summarize, you know, what the reason why we have to do a P O C D, the update process, some of the history, and then some of the process. Chapter Two, which is what we're talking about giving to you tomorrow, is going to be the New Canaan Today chapter. This one is going to be, as I started to explain, the further taking the data book that we've given you on the community profile and existing conditions inventory, and starting to explain it in more detail, analyze the points that are appropriate to analyze, and then start to identify key takeaways to take out that are going to then be, you know, you're going to see that when you get to then the theme chapters and the goals and strategies. You know, we've also talked about a more in-depth history of New Canaan being put in because that's in crucial. And we're going to still be talking with Sarah to kind of figure out whether that ends up being in the introduction, whether that ends up being a part of New Canaan Today, which you wouldn't have tomorrow, or whether that maybe gets woven into the chapter about the community vision. But there's some time to think about that unique piece for New Canaan. After kind of going through that New Canaan Today, the document would then jump right into the community vision. The community vision would obviously be bold and highlighted in there right up front to explain. But then there would be also a description text that would go along with it to kind of explain, you know, how that came about and what's going to be proceeding with the actual themes. Chapter Four would then be an exploration of each one of the four theme areas. Each theme area would be its own subchapter within that chapter. And then the, there would be a discussion that would be included in there that would link back to Chapter Two as well as the vision, because each themed area does have a vision. And then we would go into the goals. And each goal would be identified. And then the strategies for each goal would be laid out. And then underneath that would be then the action steps or policies for each one of the strategies. That chapter would then be followed by what is, you know, referred to as the Future Land Use Plan, or the Implementation Plan, or the Strategic Plan, whatever you all ultimately decide that you'd like to call it. Traditionally, in the state of Connecticut, it's referred to as the Future Land Use Plan. And that's also kind of laying out what the land uses are, which may be very consistent with way they are today. But that's really kind of the guidance for the land use decisions for the next 10 years and beyond. That's also covered with detailed descriptions about the plan. And then each one of the land uses that would be laid out in the Future Land Use Plan, which again, would trend most likely very closely to existing zoning or potential zoning adjustments that you may like to make in the next 10 years. That would wrap up with then a consistency, which is required by the state, a consistency with the state plan, as well as the regional Plan of Conservation and P O C D. And then there would be appendices, which would include the implementation table that we just talked about. And then also the community profile and existing conditions inventory or the data book would be in the appendices. And then any other documents, like maybe the community survey summary documents or things like that could be also included in the appendices. So this is the first kind of like broad overview of what the final plan is going to look like. There's plenty of opportunity for us to maybe adjust the wording, like if we want to somehow use the strategic plan that was kind of laid out, you know, 10 years ago, if you'd like to use that term and carry it forward. But we can kind of discuss those kind of nuances with some of those wording. So I guess, any like questions on that? Or do you want me to kind of, I can continue to move forward with a little bit more explanation about Chapter Two, or we can kind of go back and talk a little bit about the layout of the goals, strategies, and actions? Any preference?
Chapter Two?
Yeah, I say go to Chapter Two.
Chapter Two.
Okay. So the first draft of Chapter Two that you'll be getting tomorrow, you know, right now, we have it laid out, is called the New Canaan Today. And as I've already mentioned, this explores more detail and it identifies the most important components of the community profile and existing conditions inventory, and the resiliency and sustainability review that's in the greater data book that we supplied to you, you know, last month and several months ago that you've been, you know, you previously have reviewed. That document is like, is just all the data. It's just all the data laid out. Doesn't, in many cases, it has some takeaways, but it doesn't have like an in-depth analysis or discussion about it. So this Chapter Two, you know, takes those points and we bring forward the points that we have identified as being the most important to discuss. This chapter is divided up into first, again, we focus on the community profile first. And the community profile is in fact, a comprehensive review of New Canaan's data and the community today data. And that includes the demographics, housing, and economic data. It supplies that more detailed analysis that you've been looking for. And it reviews the conditions as they are today with a lot more text, changes since the last P O C D. So kind of looking at like where, what, how, what things are changing and what is, you know, how's that laying the groundwork for things that you should focus on. And then lastly, it focuses on assessing conditions for the next decade, so that you know what to lay out as far as goals and strategies, to make sure that we're kind of covering those, the bases on those type of things. We also have in the, in the, it's just a Word document that we've sent to you, so therefore, it's not inclusive like of pictures and graphs and things like that. We're just focused on the text. We can also share with you the actual data book in its entirety, if you, if you don't have that handy, or if you feel that Sarah could forward that to you, so that you can see all the data. We can certainly refresh that and send that to you again. But then, you know, at the conclusion of the community profile piece and throughout, we've identified the important takeaways, again, to be considered with the goals, strategies, and actions. We feel that with everything that we've heard from talking with you and the community through all of the various activities, these are the important points for us all to consider. Now, that's why we want to share it with you now, because you may have a difference of opinion of what Sarah and our team have identified. And that's why we want you to look at it early rather than later, so that we can make adjustments which will help to guide the goals and strategies. For the existing conditions component of the Chapter Two, it takes a little bit different approach, because most of this information is just listing information, like, you know, for instance, like community facilities. In the data book itself, we just list that, you know, there's a lot... In the data book itself, we just list that, you know, there's a library, there's a community center. In this particular chapter, what we're doing is we're kind of laying that out in a little bit more detail, but we're not necessarily drawing any conclusions. That's the approach that we decided to take with Sarah, because that will be, we're assuming that because this is more like a condition situations that are unique to the town, that that's probably gonna come out more in the discussions in the theme chapters, and then if there's desires for changes or where improvements might be, that will be laid out in the theme chapters and then obviously within the goals and strategies to support those kind of initiatives. And then lastly, also within the existing conditions section is again sharing and exploring that data about climate resilience and changing climate patterns, because we know that that's something important to you, and we kind of discuss that in more detail so that that frame of reference is gonna be within the document. So that's kind of a broad overview of what's gonna be in chapter two that you'll be seeing. I think once you see that document, you'll start to see some of those, you know, those points pulled out. There's some explanations, we have comment bubbles on the side that kind of help explain some of the thinking or some of the points, but we're obviously very much looking forward to your comments, your suggestions, and some of your guidance so that we can all get this section and the points that need to be made in it to their best.
Commissioner, is any thoughts on what we've just heard?
Please, anyone?
My button's hard. I look forward to reading it, and obviously, without reading it, I don't really have anything super educated to say right now, other than in relation to Chris talking about this sort of hierarchy or waterfall of goals, strategies, actions. I'm hoping that some of the analysis, you, you call them takeaways, in the past, I've called them issues, but kind of highlights what I would say are issues that we need to deal with, and then those also then tie into the goal strategies, strategies and actions, like you should be taking, making goals to deal with the issues that you've identified in the existing conditions.
Right.
So that's just like another layer of this waterfall that we've already discussed that needs to exist.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're really eager to kind of get your perspectives too, so that we can make sure that if, like, you know, if we all have kind of missed pointing something out more directly, that we can, you know, capture that now, and then we will have an opportunity in like the discussion about how the final plan comes together, you know, how do we link that up? Do we have some kind of call-out boxes? Or, you know, when we get to the theme chapters, do we bring some of those call-out boxes back forward and get and all that? So those will be kind of like the nuances of the uniqueness to the plan, you know, but right now, we're trying to focus on the like text specific and at the points that were being made, but we can make those linkages visually in the final document.
Commissioner Chris, as, as I read this, my, my sense is that this chapter is literally and metaphorically the lay of the land. This is, this is what we got. And so no matter where we wanna go, we had to figure out where your starting point is, and this is our starting point as far as facilities and other resources. Is that a fair statement?
Definitely. I mean, I, it's the baseline, it's, you know, it's the baseline both for the community profile, you know, this is like, in that particular case, it's like the benchmark, you know, like this is where population is, this is where population has gone, and this is where we think it's gonna go. We also have, you know, some comparisons, like how do you fit in with, you know, your neighbors or other communities within Connecticut, so that those types of things will be kind of clear. But it's definitely the, it's the, the benchmark and the base aligned information that is in the data book but brought forward for, in a discussion format.
One point I would, I would add one word on your final bullet point, and climate resilience, I would, and sustainability, I would include biodiversity too, which tends to get lost, but it's a personal issue for me, but I think that's an important one as well, and one I know the commission has spent time on in various applications, so.
Right.
One thought.
Yep, I, I think we're on that. I know that we, we have a strategy, I believe, that actually has that word in it, so we're, I know we're in good shape.
Fair enough.
But I think also that while that does link in there, we also have kind of like, you know, in the second to last bullet point where, where it says the existing conditions, where it talks about the environment, I think biodiversity and invasive species and things like that are kind of covered there as well.
Okay. So, so, so again, this draft chapter we receive tomorrow, and you wanna get it back in essentially two weeks.
Yep.
So we would send that to Sarah, and she will handle it.
I will then forward it to S L R and we will work on it.
Okay.
Facilitate a conversation with us, and then we'll figure out, you know, because we will potentially have another meeting, you know, coming up in either April or May, and then we'll start to figure out what the best approach for, I'm, I'm sorry, April is what I meant to say. And, you know, we'll figure out whether we need to, you know, regroup on the, the goals and strategies, or whether we have a pretty good concurrence and we're ready to, you know, start talking about the action steps, but that's what will kind of come, you know, that's what's gonna be really crucial for us to then gauge around the third of April once we start to see what your comments are. And Sarah will definitely communicate with you, you know, exactly what then the next steps will be.
So as I understand it, the third week in April would be, you have received our feedback, you have digested, and now we're to talk about it. Is that fair?
That's a potential item, yes, that's correct.
And we'll also be reviewing it with other town staff before we come back to you. Also, we'll have comments, not only from you all, but from staff as well, outside of myself.
When you say town staff, that means exactly who?
So that's.
Just planning and zoning staff?
No, so I'm, those, those roundtable discussions that we've been talking about.
That's gonna be.
That'll be before we meet again.
Yeah, most likely. I think that's what we're thinking, but if for some reason there is like a major, you know, issue where you really feel like, wow, I really, we really need to discuss this in more detail, that might be what we talk about before we have the roundtable meetings on the goals and strategies, for instance, because we wanna make sure that we have your general concurrence and suggestions have been added to the goals and strategies before we take them and talk with some of the other stakeholders or staff or the subject matter experts, so that we know that we're kind of covering most of the bases, even though those types of things will continue to evolve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask just about chapter two in terms of how it uses the, the other two elements that you have, the existing inventories? You, you mentioned the community profile and existing inventories are kind of cold to get to chapter two, is that the way to think of it? Because I'm just thinking, like, the existing inventory is 43 slides of data and the existing conditions are a lot as well. So is chapter two meant to be a summary of those two and kind of takes those, and then would those be in the appendix, or would that data just be set aside and not be included in the plan?
No, that's, I mean, I, you know, just to clarify, you know, I didn't, I mentioned that, that the, the new Canaan, you know, chapter two, again, it explores in, in more detail those items that are within the data, the full data book, or the, you know, the community, community profile and existing conditions inventory, but we pull out the most important components that based on our discussions that we feel are most, you know, important for, you know, for the next 10 years. In many cases, it's gonna include a summary of most of those points, but, you know, they're gonna be more succinct and more on target with the direction that we're heading. But as I mentioned here, the full community profile and existing conditions inventory can, you know, with all those slides, will be included as the, as an appendancy to the document, and it will be referenced in the, in the beginning of chapter two, that would say that the full community profile and existing conditions inventory can be found in, you know, the appendices. So there would, there will be that linkage.
Okay, I missed that point.
Yeah, but chapter two is meant to be more of like a succinct, pulling together the most important items.
That's the way I interpreted it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to.
It will include both.
Because there's so much great data in the community profile, I was just.
Right.
It's sort of, you have to pick your theme, so it makes sense to do that.
Yeah, when we, when we figure out like, you know, again, pulling infographics and tables and charts into the final document, you know, we will have to be, you know, again, very strategic about that because there's so many that we could potentially pull. Okay, but no, that's good, good question, just to, you know, to clarify, so I'm glad. Thanks for asking that again. The other thing that I was going to, I guess we jumped around a little bit, but just to talk about the other document that you're gonna get is, you know, is a several-page document of just the, into each individual theme area, and then it's gonna, you know, then list the goals that were, we've framed in together, as well as the initial strategies to go underneath those goals. What won't be included are the actions or policy statements, but just to clarify for, you know, your information purposes now, so that you'll understand what you're seeing tomorrow, is that the goals that will be included, that those are broad statements to support the actual theme area. Then the strategy is a more specific subject statement to support that goal, you know, because the goal will probably, there could probably be many different, more specific subjects that could be covered. And then an action that would come under that individual strategy would be a very specific action step or policy to support that strategy. So the examples that we have for you on the screen right now, as an example of the goal that we've included that you'll see tomorrow, is that, and I believe this is in theme area one, is that the first goal is to encourage downtown vibrancy. That's a goal, because it's a very broad statement. A strategy, one of the strategies that's underneath that is support business retention and growth within the downtown area. Then under that, you won't see this now, because this is just a suggestion of the type of action, but an action that would potentially come in underneath that strategy would be work with the Chamber of Commerce to develop a business incubator program to support development of local businesses in downtown. So that's kind of like the structure, so that you go from the very broad goal to a more specific subject strategy, and then to a specific action. It is possible that some of the actions might ultimately be a policy too, where you might wanna like say, make a policy statement that would support that strategy. And we can kind of, if those end up kind of getting worked out during the development of actions, whether it's an action step or whether it's a policy step, we could, we'll integrate that appropriately at that time, and we can even have them divided up as to the policies and the action steps that would go under that strategy.
To bring it back to Kent's question earlier, it would be then my assumption that, not necessarily when they're policy, policy statements, but more when they're action items, that you'll pull those action items and that's what will make up the bulk of the implementation plan?
That's correct. Like in the implementation plan itself, it will be set up as like a table, and we do have examples of that, and like the goal will be across the top, and then it will then list the strategies and then the action steps. But the action steps will be the things that will then end up having like the timeframe, the, the responsible entity primary, and then maybe secondary.
Right.
And, and then we can even include something like if it's a sustainability strategy or something like that, but that's exact, that's exactly correct.
Okay. I just wanted to help everyone understand how these actions play into the implementation plan.
Yeah, it's the action steps that actually then get explored further in the implementation table.
Okay, I would also note, for me, on the implementation, it's hard to push that button, I gotta tell you, it takes a, it takes a little training here.
I like a monjeopardy.
Yeah. Okay, I'll take stuff I know for a thousand, Alex. Okay. Anyway, regarding implementation, it's also who does it? Now, many of the things are probably not, inevitably could be things that are beyond the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so I want to, I, I would want to have a, you know, who is responsible for this, being attached to this.
We said like responsible entity, that we usually, that's what we, the term we usually use.
Yes, absolutely.
And then even secondary entity can be listed there, and that's usually a primary aspect of the implementation table.
Often, it's more than one group or several, one, two or more groups working together, but name somebody so we know who to point to.
And that's exactly why we wanna like eventually, in the coming month, start talking about the action steps with the, at the roundtable meetings with the internal town departments and things like that that are gonna be, you know, involved, because we need to make sure that we have their buy-in, you know, and, but they should be supplying us with actions. You know, that, one that's very easy and clear is like, you know, talking with the town engineer, for instance, you know, about sidewalk projects. You know, we'll be able to make a linkage to some of the existing projects that are known, some that may be coming up or desired, and then maybe grant funding, so that, you know, we can download that and then share that with you, that this is the information that we learned from talking to internal, to the internal channels of like ideas that might be relevant, that you might want to include.
And there's internal channels, what about, like here we have, you mentioned here in this example, Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce will be some of the people with whom you'll be meeting, some, call it non-governmental groups that are, I think, you know, pretty important in town. I'm wondering.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll finalize the list soon and we'll send it out to you all just in case you can, so you all can look over and make sure we haven't missed anyone, but we haven't finalized that list yet. We do have a draft list, but we haven't finalized it yet.
Because then issues downtown that we, if we're not talking to the Chamber of Commerce, I think is gonna be a rather un, unhelpful conversation.
Right.
Might be.
Yeah, so I think, and even if like maybe there's like a two-tiered approach with the discussions, is that maybe we meet initially with like the most, you know, in the, in-town direct stakeholders, but then when like other stakeholders get identified, like maybe the Chamber of Commerce, then we loop back with them to say, these are some goal, or these are some action steps that the Planning and Zoning Commission is wanting to make sure is included, we wanna make sure we have your concurrence, if we for some reason have missed conversations with them initially. But I think the Chamber of Commerce is an example of a really highly likely group that we'll probably talk about, or bring in at least the, you know, the president of the Chamber of Commerce to come in and talk with us. Because they probably have a lot of things and programs that they're currently supporting or wanting to support that would be beneficial to link in this plan, so. But that, that buy-in and including them in those conversations is always very crucial because they, you know, they won't be, it won't be a surprise to them, and then it makes it easy for the implementation table, so. Okay, let me just, okay, there was something else I was gonna, I thought there was a slide I hadn't covered. So just again about the goals and strategies for what you're gonna be seeing tomorrow, is that the, for theme area number one, which is preserve New Canaan's welcoming small-town identity, we have initially identified four goals, and then there's 11 strategies that go with those four goals. For theme area two, which is promote creative balanced development, we have identified two goals for you to consider, and then 10 strategies that get divided up between those two goals. Theme area three, embrace sustainability and resiliency, has four goals and 12 strategies initially identified. And then lastly, theme area four is enhance community infrastructure and facilities, and we have identified initially three goals and 11 strategies. And like I said at the bottom, just remember that the action steps will be added later, and you will not be seeing them at this point, because those will be coming after we kind of have all the goals and strategies framed in.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Go ahead, Ken.
Oh, thank you. On the embrace the sustainability and the resiliency, how does protecting our existing parks kind of fall into, I think it's under this area three. For example, at Waveney, there's a kind of a creep, scope creep as far as the uses within the park that are, you know, have been going on for many years, and I'm not sure we're really planning for protecting the, the park and the open space. Would, would something like that fall under this part of sustainability?
One of the thing that maybe this will also clarify is that there's some subjects which may fall into multiple theme areas, but their focus would be slightly different. You know, because for instance, we might talk about parks in theme area four, because that's about community infrastructure and facilities, so there might be one, there might be a goal or a strategy in there that's more focused on, you know, maintaining or expanding park facilities or services or recreation programs. But embrace sustainability and resilience, we might take, there might be a goal that takes more of the approach of, you know, how can, with changing environmental conditions, how can we, you know, protect and enhance park space that might be along, say, within the 100-year floodplain or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
So there will be, you know, there will be different nuances on those different subjects embedded within the different theme areas as it may be appropriate.
And as far as the implementation of something like that, for example, a master plan for Waveney, would, would that also fall into kind of both area three and four?
Well, I think if you wanted to develop a master plan for that park, I would think that it would probably fall under theme area four's discussion about parks, and that would actually be, you know, where the strategy might be, you know, to continue to enhance existing park facilities, and then under that, there, there would be an action step that would say, you know, pursue the development of a master plan for that park, or, you know, and pursue grant funding or something like that. and pursue grant funding or something like that. So that's kind of how that would play. And that's a very, very common action step that we see in a lot of P O C Ds, you know, wanting to do like park master plans or concept plans and then also seek grant funding for maybe further development or expansion. So those would be, there's definitely a lot of room for that, those types of things to be included.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So, it's a question that kind of follows on Kent's question there. So with, you know, the strategy might be develop a master plan that helps identify, you know, the park's core assets, its important areas that need to be protected and its potential development areas. Because I feel like if you're too vague, like it's going back to your example of, I think you had the waterfall where you said balanced development and provide development, encourage development in the downtown. I think the, one way of maybe wordsmithing that would be encourage focused development in downtown versus at the periphery of the town. So the choice would be to create incentives where, or rules where instead of having a business spin up in a person's backyard, we would encourage it to be downtown to therefore focus economic activity, the strategy being it creates a more resilient downtown that helps the economy. So that's a choice that we kind of are making to say, hey, we want to discourage backyard businesses and we want to encourage things to be downtown. Do we get that specific or we go ahead and kind of talk about what we don't want to have?
I mean, yeah, I mean, again, it's your plan, so you know, we all, that's why we want to work on this all together because you, you know, we want to make sure that these get crafted to what you all feel the most comfortable with. I think some of what you just said though, that's going to kind of come out in like the theme area discussion that will, that would precede the actual jumping into the goals. So maybe that conversation that you just had about wanting to focus the commercial activity in downtown as opposed to on the edges of the community, that most likely would be something that would be in the text part of that theme, you know, that that would be like what you're looking to do. And then that would be followed up by the theme, but if you wanted to repeat that or as a policy, what you don't want to see, that could be potentially included if that's the direction that you want to go in.
Well, again, I don't, I'm not an economist, so I don't know if that's the right direction to go. But I guess that would be, I guess I would want to try to avoid being vague where if we have an economist on the line here that can say, hey, there's actually a benefit to strategies that push us in a certain direction that it, you know, for example, putting, you know, transit-oriented development's helpful because it reduces parking costs and therefore you can access talent from outside of town, et cetera. So I imagine that would be kind of a classic strategy. So would, that would I imagine enter the conversation during that, goals and actions?
Yes, definitely could. Yeah, definitely could. I think we do want to think further down the line of, right, what will actually happen from these goals? And of course, we should be incorporating, you know, best practices for planning and economic development, so.
It's Commissioner Turner. Chris brings up, brings up a very good point. If we use Waveney as an example to get specific about, you know, what should be developed and what can be developed. You know, legally, the park has restrictions about what can be developed, where it can be developed and to what amount. At what point do we get into kind of a legal input and education about our wishes and desires versus what we're legally allowed to do? Makes sense?
Well, you obviously have to be very careful with that. I mean, I mean, like for instance, I mean, we would obviously guide you on that, some of those things like with that park, which we may not have known that, that's something that, you know, Sarah would have to caution you about. You know, like for instance, if you wanted to put a statement in the P O C D that said, you know, I mean, I'm just going to be too, very, you know, obvious, but if you said something like, we do not support any affordable housing within the town, you know, we would say, okay, it's your plan. If you want to put that in there, you can, but we caution you and we suggest that you do not because that's contrary to the state's plan as well as the regional plan and you probably will have a plan that will then be appealed at the, you know, during the appeal period. So I think, you know, I would say that we would caution you if something like that would come up. And I would, you know, I would suggest that we kind of try to avoid those types of things. And then in some cases, like with the desires for the park master plan is maybe not to be too specific because, you know, you may want to support that, but ultimately that will be the decision of, you know, the, you know, Park and Recreation Department and, you know, maybe the, if you, Park and Recreation Commission. But you can certainly make that recommendation that you support that idea. But you might need to leave it, and you could certainly even put some desires under that if you want, but I would avoid anything that may be extremely controversial or illegal.
And I'll just, I'll just jump in to address Kent's question specifically about Waveney. You know, one way to address it may be in theme area four to have a goal that's to continue to safeguard Waveney Park for its, you know, original purpose. And then a strategy would be, you know, ensuring that the deed restrictions are properly managed and then there may be an action step that then suggested that there's a designated staff person who manages making sure that all the deed restrictions are followed or something like that, just to, I think that's more what you're talking about.
Yeah. Thank you, Sarah. That's very clear.
I wanted to give Julia another opportunity if she, maybe to just, because I know that when we developed these initial goals and strategies, obviously Julia was a part of like developing some of the initial strategies for like downtown. You know, do you want to, with, obviously we don't have them in front of you, so we can't be too specific, but maybe she can give a little bit more of the flavor of them that might, or just her thinking along in developing them that might kind of clarify some of your initial thoughts.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. So the, in looking at the strategies for downtown, there are, you know, several things we can consider in terms of, you know, the physical environment, the business environment and development. So, you know, things like, you can look at things like streetscape, transportation, that is all connected of course to downtown vibrancy. There are elements about, you know, where you would want to focus development in terms of perhaps putting housing, you know, putting housing closer to downtown to enable people to be close to businesses, to be close to transit. We definitely did include in our goals, discussion of sort of increasing connections to transportation and considering, you know, proximity to transportation and to businesses and where you would want to be focusing or encouraging development. But then, you know, then there are other strategies about, you know, business support. And then it even gets into, you know, further along, we can get into, you know, zoning. It's all very interrelated, but especially in downtown because, you know, it's housing, it's business development, it's streetscape, urban design and transportation, so.
Okay, thank you, Julia.
Can I ask, Julia, just to expand on that. So can you help us, so from an economic perspective, I imagine you're kind of looking at things like, okay, how can we increase like the GDP of the town and increase the higher, the standard of living and, you know, bring more prosperity if we're kind of talking high level? Do you then kind of look at the best ways and the highest and best use of different resources and how to kind of nurture that environment or can you talk a little about that or just like a sample idea?
Yeah, I mean, I would say I don't know if we got that detailed yet. And we haven't looked at GDP, we look more at, it's more like job creation, business creation and, you know, considering the types, you know, the types of industries that could be supported and that are, but ensuring those are also appropriate with like your land, landing schools. And later on, we'll want to consider like fiscal conditions and how some of these goals or strategies would, you know, impact the tax base or if some of these decisions might be costly for the town.
You know, also I just wanted to mention too, remember this is a policy document, you know, so it's going to kind of lay out some of the policies that would be considered or to kind of lay the land for some of the ideas that you're talking about. But I think the action steps can kind of get as close to what you're talking about as we probably will within this document.
Yeah.
I just don't know what I don't know on this sort of front, so I'm just curious on, you know, what the potential impacts are down the line. So like the comments that you made about, you know, making a choice about, okay, well if we designate a large piece of property, a town property, if we, you know, it takes it off the tax roll or, you know, there, there's economic impacts to that or if we allocate this for development, it's a higher and best use and therefore it could increase the taxable base by X, which would actually keep our taxes.
Right. I mean, I think for instance, that would be a potential policy statement because you would want to say that in considering economic development opportunities in downtown, depending on the parcel, you know, the gains or the loss of potential tax base needs to be considered, you know, on any, any type of application. You know, for instance, if the town administration decided to go forward with say, redeveloping the parking lot here at Town Hall, you know, you would want to make sure that maybe you've considered a policy that would help guide them on making sure that they consider the economic benefits or disruptions that may occur. And, you know, obviously those things will become a little bit more clear once we start to identify some of those strategies or if you want to get very specific about a specific site, you know, like if there's a site in downtown that we've all identified that we want to talk about in a specific strategy, we would want to make sure that we include quite a few action steps that give some guidance on how that process would proceed forward, like if there was going to be a public-private partnership.
Well, one thing, that brings up a key issue for me that I think, I mean, one thing I've noted is that sometimes we kind of pursue projects without necessarily thinking about like the net return on the project or the potential maintenance burden that the project or replacement burden that the project may have. And so, you know, working through the concept of, okay, you know, for a, whatever, if you put a playground at a given spot, that will do X, Y, and Z versus if you put a building there, it'll do X, Y, and Z and you should look at it at a 10-year horizon or a 20-year horizon. Okay.
That's a good policy statement.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, we won't be able to do, you know, like an in-depth fiscal impact analysis for every potential suggestion, but it's something that we can, you know, like Robert was saying, is provide very detailed instructions for like if you were to pursue this, we would recommend doing this type of analysis. And, you know, I can give my professional opinion on what uses are, you know, more or less like fiscally responsible or maybe more or less costly or what's the highest and best use. You know, we can give general guidance on that. And then like Robert was saying, incorporating sort of fiscal responsibility into your action steps or implementation plan is one, one method to address that.
Thank you. Nice for entertaining that.
Sorry.
Distraction.
It's Commissioner.
Yeah, please.
Sorry, Commissioner Turner. You know, our, our town is, is dealing with a lot of institutional uses that are expanding for various reasons. And they are having an impact on the neighboring community. If I understand correctly, theme area two, when you say promote creative balanced development, would the discussion about institutional uses and fall under that? And if it does, should we consider maybe changing the word promote to something that is a little more realistic and reflects what's really going on where we have divergent points of view that perhaps cannot be balanced?
So this is Sarah. I'll jump in. My interpretation of how this was written was that promote creative balanced development was more the housing focus section and downtown development, not necessarily institutional uses. Off the top of my head, I would think that what you're talking about, Kent, would make more sense in preserve New Canons welcoming, welcoming small town identity and, you know, trying to balance what uses we already have with how to handle their, you know, assumed evolution in the future. But that's just an initial thought.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to focus on that. I don't, I don't think we can have a strategy and a implementation unless we actually call attention to what is going on with institutional uses in New Canons.
Yeah, Commissioner Turner, I mean, I would agree with Sarah that creative and balanced development is more of the, call it downtown, which includes peripheral parts of the downtown, which is Grove, I'll say Pine, Cross Viti, which is sort of a little riper for, for development. The issue of institutional, institutional development or institutional uses in, let's call it residential areas, is certainly an area we may wish to focus on. But I think this is really, the balanced development is, you know, it used to be in downtown, you didn't have housing. Well, we do have housing in downtown now and people seem to like it. It's worked well, I think. You know, should we, you know, if we're going to look at development, let's say in Cross and Viti, which would seem to have a number of opportunities, some of which have already been utilized with, with housing and new businesses. Again, it's the mix of retail, other types of business and residential that we think is appropriate for that would be something I would assume we would think about throughout the downtown area. We did that in Locust and.
Beatty.
Forest Street, you know, where we have some retail on the ground floor and we have residential above. Seems to work well.
I mean, the other thing I'll say about both those examples is that we did a plan for Cross and Beatty, I don't remember how many years ago, it was before my time.
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago. And I know that the 2014 P O C D gives multiple options to deal with institutional and residential uses and residential zones that I don't think the commission has taken any action on in the last 10 years. And I'm not saying that that doesn't mean it's an issue. I think it still is an issue, but I think there's probably some good answers already laid out in our past documents, so I'm not sure. We have to reinvent the wheel on that one. We just have to choose a path and go down it.
Right. And I totally agree. The, just the way the theme area one is worded, preserve small town identity, that's, that's a perception. You know, to me, it's just too general. It's not, it's not really a goal that you can identify. I think there needs to be something that is a little more specific and, you know, we can say preserve New Canons welcoming town and the relationship to its residents, residents and other uses. You know, something a little more tangible that we can kind of craft some implementation, you know, goals and implementation around that.
I would just suggest, Commissioner Turner, that when we get this, you and everyone else will have an opportunity to make these points and I think. And I think S L R is waiting for us to make those points and they want to hear them. So.
Fair enough.
We'll be, we'll be able to do that.
And I would just add a clarifying point that, you know, the, as Robert had alluded to, when the plan is a little more developed, every theme area is going to have, you know, a text portion that's introducing it. So that may be where, you know, whether we decide to stick with the small town identity wording or not, that's where we would more specifically articulate what does that mean, you know, to the subcommittee and to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town.
I agree. Thanks.
Should we move on to the next topic? Okay.
That actually is everything that we had to discuss with you tonight. I mean, I would just kind of like reiterate that, you know, we did talk, we did kind of jump through the schedule really quickly. But, you know, we are, you know, we are going to slide things forward a little bit. We'll work closely with Sarah next week to kind of get the schedule like revised. And then she'll share that with you just so that you're kind of aware of kind of some, some new dates and some new targets. Obviously, the most important thing is for you guys to take a look at, you know, you know, completely digest the community vision statement and the survey results to see if there's anything that pops out there that you might want to make sure you want to be thinking about when it gets, when you start then looking at the goals and strategies. Take a look at them as well as chapter two. Remember everything that we've laid out so far in chapter two and in the strategies, goals and strategies are our initial guidance for you. So everything is open for, you know, you to make suggestions and comments and edits so that we can get, you know, your input. But it's kind of like the starting point for you to be considered. Hopefully, we've all hit a pretty good target. But obviously, we look forward to your suggestions.
And again, as you're reviewing everything, please reach out to me in the meantime if you have any questions. You don't have to wait to, you know, until we have another meeting with S L R. Because I assisted in reviewing all these documents. So if any questions come up in the next few weeks, please reach out to me.
President Logistics, I would, it seems that Sarah and I and consultant, in consultation with you and the other commissioners to stick a pin in a date, probably in late April for a meeting, maybe, or is that about right?
Yeah, that's what we'll definitely talk about tomorrow. I mean, I think we did have one in late April already targeted. But depending on your review of the goals and strategies, whether that might need to slide, keep it there or whether it might slide to early April or late, like maybe early May so that we could maybe include, share back information that we've received from talking with the stakeholders or town staff with some potential actions. So it's going to kind of, you know, we kind of have that, that kind of idea framed in, if that makes any sense.
Would, would your own preference be to have that meeting in early May as opposed to late April? So that we can, you can benefit from the conversations with town staff, which are, which are recommendations?
I mean, I think that's probably our preference. But we're also very eager for you to take a quick, you know, your next two weeks to take a look at the goals and strategies. And if we're way off base or something like that, then that's why we're kind of holding maybe an April meeting. But if not, if everything, you know, if you give us some suggestions and we add them to them, but we're all kind of like moving in the same direction, then I think we would be in good shape then to go with maybe an early May meeting instead.
How about this as a suggestion? Let's, I'm sure that all the commissioners will be diligent in reviewing the documents you're sending and provide feedback to Sarah, who will coordinate response with you. Depending on that feedback, let's make a judgment of whether we want to have a meeting perhaps in late April and perhaps another one in early May, depending on variance of reaction. And we'll just cross that bridge when we come to it. Is that reasonable?
Yep, that's exactly what we talked about today. Yep. So I think we're on target.
Fair enough. And I just remind S L R that we want to ensure that we make our year-end deadline.
That's correct.
I'm going to keep repeating that just in case. Good, fair enough. Other questions or comments from the commissioners? Anything else? Should we, is there anyone in the public who wants to comment or should we?
There's no one. There's no one on Zoom. I didn't advertise this as a public comment type meeting. So.
Okay, fair enough. Any other thing else finally to, for S L R to hear? Questions? Anything else?
Well, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you again tonight. We look forward to your view. And I'd also like to thank my colleagues for joining tonight, Julia and Taylor, and for their involvement. And we look forward to our continued coordination with you.
On the second point, there's something that you may want to hear. So just wait about two minutes. Anyway, the second agenda item is any other business that may come before the subcommittee. Just make an idea to float it to everyone in the room. We do have this photo contest with, I guess we're getting a number of pictures in?
I think we have around 50 photos.
Okay. What I thought as far as sort of picking them, you outlined, what was it? Cover page and about six chapters and appendix. So that's, call it seven. I thought perhaps that Sarah and S L R could coordinate on picking, let's say, two, maybe three suggestions of the photographs for each of those. And then the subcommittee would maybe choose them. I want to sort of make this sort of a community event where the subcommittee would then pick.
So I would recommend maybe tabling this conversation until the next meeting just because the photo contest continues to be open through the end of April into mid-May. So I would recommend waiting until we actually understand how many photos we're talking about. And once we're a little further in plan development, because I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head how many photos we need to include in the plan. It could be we need 50 photos in the plan. And if we have 75 photos, you know, we may want to include a lot of them. So I would recommend just tabling this for a little longer.
I certainly want to make an event of this with all the community involvement. So, okay, fair enough.
Well, I know, just to mention, if I may jump in, because I know we talked about this maybe a month ago, is that, you know, with the community open house that we would most likely be having sometime in the month of May where we would be sharing with the community the goals, strategies and actions. I think we had talked then that that might be where the results of the photo contest could maybe be displayed or shared.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
And I do think, you know, we can include, I mean, maybe not several hundred, but we can certainly include a lot of pictures. You know, you might want to look at the example that we shared with you of the town and it is available on their town's website, the town of Southbury. They had several photographers, one which, that was on staff and one that was in within the community that supplied a lot of pictures and they're beautiful. We always joked at the end that that plan was almost like a coffee table, you know, photo book because the pictures were so pretty. So you can maybe take a look at that example to see how many pictures can actually be included.
And I'll send the link to that plan in my email tomorrow with the attachments because I think it is a good example of what, you know, ours could look like for structure purposes.
Yeah. I mean, I think the structure is probably a little bit different, but just it does have the basic chapters and implementation table and then just a lot of pictures.
Okay. Fair enough. Third point is approval of minutes. February 7, 2024. Has everyone received the minutes? Any commentary, changes, anything? Okay. Do you have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve. I can't get, I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
You have a third?
I'm just getting ready.
You're practicing the button push. Yes, it's a little tricky. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Passed unanimously? Adjourned. Thank you.